We're gonna get started here.
It's. I watch this, you're going to another.
Hello Troy.
Hello, good evening, can you hear?
Oh, that hat, I love it.
Alright.
Thank you ma'am.
Hi Noah.
How's that?
Um, okay, hey, hello mayor, hello city council.
Oh, yeah.
Hello.
On this beautiful sunny day, I've got some stuff to share with you, I'm gonna share screen.
Where's sound coming from?
There we go. Um, alright, a couple of months ago, Jessica shared with you our uh new sustainable tourism model um that we are following. Um, and there was a couple uh stick a pin in that kind kind of things that we uh had shared um that I want to double back on. Um, and the biggest one being that is um in our climate and resiliency uh pillar for uh destination smart. Uh, we have partnered with uh Waste Loop to help underwrite the glass recycling in Leavenworth. Um, in discussions with them had found that the uh funding for taking the approximately twice monthly uh haul over to the recycling facility was underfunded and in in need of funding or not being able to complete the year. So um the chamber has underwritten the um operations for that for the rest of the year, which can help Waste Loop pivot to help make this a more sustainable model that can grow. Um, and this is one of those great wins for everyone since the glass recycling is not only open to the residents, but of course for the um businesses that um could produce a lot of glass waste, especially our um our wine tasting rooms. So big win there um and great partnership on being able to help um continue glass recycling in the city. Um, under our funding it forward, um wanted to share a little bit that every year we do our carvings for causes and this is where we put the carvings that were done for Mayfest up for auction throughout the summer at various locations in town. And we're doing that again, and this year we have um chosen uh, the team has chosen Open Dogs and the Royal Bavarians who will share the proceeds of um that fundraising event. And then finally, in our visitor flow management uh arena, we've got our recreation ambassadors again. And these are the ten uh organizations that will be helping us out and all participating as recreation ambassadors uh for this season. Training is next Wednesday on the nineteenth, Juneteenth, um and uh at the evening five thirty at the firehouse. And so we'll be kicking that um program out the final weekend of this month, twenty nine thirty if I believe um on the dates on that. Um, looking at some numbers, annual performance, uh let me get to my notes over here. Um, this is representing the year and I'm looking at May. Uh, let's see, we're a bit soft, uh twenty twenty-three, nine twenty-three thousand, May of this year, uh twenty uh eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, so about four percent off. Um, right now, June, as far as pedestrian counts, month-to-date is trending nicely compared to last year, so good news there, a little two percent increase in the amount of pedestrians flowing through downtown. Um, right now, and that's three thirty-four versus uh oops, I wrote the same number price. Well, it's a two point six percent increase, I just don't have the exact numbers on that, it was three thirty-four versus whatever, two point six percent more than that is. Um, the numbers definitely softer and more on par with twenty twenty-two and not twenty twenty-three. Um, and I am also sitting on the state of Washington Tourism Board of Directors, and we just had our retreat last week. Um, and was able to get a lot of information about what's going on around the state. Um, we've actually stayed the execution, a lot of destinations saw a big softening at the end of last year, um started to see it in September. Um, we kind of stayed that execution because of having Oktoberfest and Christmas Town and the lighting. Um, we kind of stayed execution for a bit, so I think we're kind of seeing that softness that other destinations started experiencing a little sooner than we. Um, and this is kind of consistent statewide within the the trends, rural travel has been up uh since the pandemic, um and that has really flattened out. Uh, there's been slight increases in urban travel, but urban travel uh in the state of Washington has been down with like only eight percent increase from last year, which was completely canceled out by um inflation. Um, so overall statewide recovery is still lagging behind every other western state. Um, and as you may or may not know, Washington State is the most, the least funded state tourism uh um in the entire west. Uh, we spend about nine million on tour state tourism, uh Oregon spends thirty. So um just a little bit of information there, um moving on. Um, in nineteen days, hard to believe that Oktoberfest tickets go on sale, uh but everything is packed and ready to go. We have all of the uh bands booked, and I don't know if I showed this before, but a a big favorite was um uh S-Bon and they had taken a hiatus in Wenatchee and will be returning um to uh Leavenworth uh this year. They were a big fan favorite, so I know a lot of people are excited about that. Uh, we have been operating our pop-up visitor center, it's been really great, uh we operate in Friday, Saturday and Sunday in the busiest times. Um, and it's been a great way to interact with our visitors, we're also pulling some data and information, finding things out about people. Um, but uh it's a great way to provide a friendly welcome, a lot of people just want to learn more about our town and ask questions and that always, you know, ha- have the silliest notions uh that are fun to to hear, but um that is going really well. Uh, and then uh just uh at the printer right now, we'll be getting them soon, is our new map. And this is the final version of it that went to the printer. Uh, one thing that's nice about the map now is we've broken out, we spent a lot of time even breaking out. Um, instead of just listing everything as dining, we've broken it out in types of food, it just made the map a lot more helpful um and usable. The other thing that will be coming out very soon that we've been working hard on uh last couple of months has been our new destination guide. It's a bigger format, uh a lot more attractive, easier to flip through, and there's uh, we added about twenty-six more pages to the destination guide. So we could add more um tips, information, um and also uh things like this, there was never a wine map in our guide showing just where all of the wine tasting rooms um are in town, so we've added a lot more maps, uh we added this information, thank you Fest Hall for buying an ad. Um, but this weddings and meetings page, this never existed in the old uh guide, and now we have um more information about that. And then finally, uh Plain Lake Wenatchee got its own little uh uh two-page spread, um just kind of a build out there um and showing a map of that area. So a lot more uh meat and very helpful information in this new guide, and I will stop sharing and answer any questions.
Questions for Troy?
Hey Troy.
What's up?
Hey Troy. How you doing? Um, have you guys uh considered, you know, it may have been maybe a legal thing too, to pre-sell beer tickets? I mean, there's two things, people buy them, you forget about them, but it'll alleviate maybe one thing on the two-step process of getting a beer. Just cares.
We haven't thought about that, but um we've just approved going with a company that uh when you check in. Uh, uh, breaking news, da-da-da-da-da-da, no more tickets, no more little paper tickets, um those are gone, those are the way of the dodos. So um kind of funny story, I was walking ahead of some girls that were walking through the fest hall and the uh gazebo last year, and one of them said, I can't believe they still use paper tickets. And the other girl said, I think you're asking too much for this little town. So that was real sweet, but um I would love to call them up and let them know that the big change is there are wristbands that we will give out, people can then, you go to the first station and you can connect your wristband to your debit card or your credit card or whatever, so you just tap and scan each time you go, so you don't have to go to the whole ticket line and then beer line, you can just go to the beer line, the first time you pay, your wristband is activated if you want to do so. Um, and if someone wants to pay cash, there's a station where they can go and just preload the wristband with cash. Um, and then and then work on sort of a debit system from there, so that would eliminating the paper tickets.
Yeah.
If somebody, if you lose your wristband and somebody picks it up, can they then use it?
If you lose your wristband, you immediately go to the uh customer service desk and have it uh canceled. Um, and then we can even uh, we will be so kind as to like cancel any, you know, they say I lost it two hours ago, we would cancel out any sales that might have happened, but also the way you put it on, it's almost like a zip tie, you can't undo it. So you you, when you're done, i- it won't slip off, yeah, if you put it on correctly, you can't get it off.
So Lola, you got a question?
Oh, I just wanted to congratulate you on um supporting the recycling, they came in and did a.
Oh, thank you.
Presentation, and that's, and I would have been thinking about that amount, I think it was only like ten thousand dollars, wasn't a huge amount, but I thought someone should pick that up, and I'm so glad that you did that, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Troy, is the band gonna be for food also or just drinks?
Oh, yeah, it would be everything, it would be everything except for our outside vendors.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Great. Alright, well, that sounds like, that sounds like one major step um forward, so that'll be great.
Yeah, getting fancy.
Yeah, that's pretty cool, Troy. Very slick.
Hush your mouth.
If it reduces complaints by ten percent, we're happy.
Alright.
I was gonna ask you Troy on the funding for Waste Loop, so that set them up for the rest of the year, which you guys funded about, I mean.
Yeah, what they, yeah, what they indicated is this would be the amount, the amount we provided would cover the deliveries for the rest of the year, and so um what uh what they're hoping to do now is with that, with that stress behind them, um they can really look at making this bigger, which uh they would like to increase the amount of uh storage capacity, maybe find a permanent home at um the Dryden Transfer Station and then be able to do more um that it would then sort of be more self-sufficient, so we're hoping that this is kind of that 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 funding that will help them get over that hump of of operating and getting more people used to it. So I think one of like these things, if you lose momentum with it, it's really hard to get that momentum back if people get into it. Um, and then also being able to do some pickups because um, you know, they're they're relying on uh the kindness of people being able to do this themselves, so being able to offer some sort of pickup service to especially downtown. I think Arianna said that uh glass was about twenty percent of the overall waste that's produced in Leavenworth, don't don't quote me, I'm may not be remembering that correctly, but it's a big, it's a big portion of of what goes to the to the station, so that's kind of their long-term plan, so yeah, we're hoping that this this funding for the rest of the year will provide that.
Thank you Troy for picking that up, uh Arianna did reach out to the city and ask if we could, but our garbage enterprise fund funds the recycling center, and we don't have any wiggle room in that fund because we're already subsidizing the recycling, the yard waste and everything, and that's paid for by the garbage enterprise fund, which solely is our commercial and multifamily accounts. Uh, and also the fact that they're supposed to be checking for IDs and it's supposed to be for city residents only, but the glass has always been a broader um.
Yeah, broader.
So it just didn't seem to make sense, and we don't have the money uh for the city to pick up the tab, so thank you very much Troy for doing that.
Yeah, that's huge.
It takes a village, right, literally?
Yep. Thank you.
Alright, thanks guys.
Alright. Okay, next is sidewalk snow removal discussion, huh?
Hey Mayor Troy, council members, good evening. This this different item did associated with sidewalk snow removal. If you recall back in January, we had a similar topic, topic, however, that was primarily for addressing the sidewalk snow removal on Front Street from Division fourteen to Fourteenth Street. One item that was left unaddressed was the fact that sidewalks in the residential area are kind of in this limbo area where where our code doesn't address it. In terms of who's responsible for the resident sidewalk. So the way the current code reads is that adjacent property owners are responsible for removing their snow on sidewalks in the commercial districts only. One thing I want to remind the council is that federal ADA regulations require agencies to have a mechanism in place to clear snow on sidewalks. So as of right now, we are not complying with federal ADA regulations by not requiring uh sidewalk snow removed by adjacent property owners in the residential districts. Simply put, staff's recommendation is to just oh simply eliminate the in the commercial districts in the code, or some example language provided in the packet, what that would do is just require all adjacent property owners to be responsible to remove snow. Uh, if they have sidewalk adjacent to their property, regardless of whether they're in residential or commercial. Provided on the screen here is just a map just to remind the council, you know, the areas noted in red, the city maintains and removes the snow from the sidewalks, and this is which is the sole purpose of creating a sidewalk around school. So it's probably hard to read, I apologize, but the thicker gray lines are sidewalks that are not maintained by the city in terms of snow removal. With one exception, we are gonna propose that we take over Front Street from again Fourteenth.
Right.
Division, but there's some areas you know, Prospect, Tom Water Drive, Cascade, the little problem area is the south side of Pine Street. You know, so if kiddo's going to school, the city maintains the north side and all the associated crosswalks, but the crosswalks on the south side are not being maintained, nor is the sidewalk, so it's kind of pointless to have a crosswalk that goes nowhere. So we received quite a few complaints, but again, there's no mechanism to require adjacent property owners to remove the snow.
So the complaints, they'll have to shovel their own sidewalks.
Exactly.
Exactly, but it's a mechanism.
Yeah, yeah, and provided in the right up to, I listed a number of cities that that require all property owners to remove the snow on sidewalks. That is a fair amount, yeah.
Yeah. Enforcement, I'm sorry, enforcement?
So there's enforcement mechanism already built into the code.
Yeah.
Uh, so it would be simply if we just eliminated any commercial districts, I mean, citywide, have existing code language for it.
So you're going to plow all snow in the commercial zone? My, I was hoping I wasn't hearing.
No, this is just what we're, what we're intending on doing, so the only additional sidewalk snow removal we're gonna take over and this was being proposed at a forthcoming city council meeting, is this Front Street from Division Fourteenth Street, both sides, if you recall in that discussion we had in January, it's kind of a problem area with pay or anything in the amount of tourists. But what we're talking about this evening is requiring property owners to remove sidewalk snow that have sidewalk adjacent to their, to the residents.
But not all property owners?
All property owners.
For the nature. But you said you're doing the one on, what's the one, is it commercial? That comes when you're coming over the bridge, instead of going down the highway, you can turn, is that commercial that you come?
That's not, so it's from.
So you're not gonna require them to, or you are going?
We are, the city's gonna, we are gonna propose that we amend our policy where city forces maintain the sidewalks. So any of the sidewalk noted in gray, it's going, we're proposing a code change that would require all the adjacent property owners to maintain the sidewalk in the winter time for snowing. Because right now, the gray sidewalks, a lot of them go unshelved.
Okay, where's the front street that you're talking about?
That gateway from the.
But they're gray, aren't they, or is that?
We haven't changed the map yet, so it's forthcoming proposal.
That was our discussion earlier because of the the parking and tourism that all fills that street up. That it's difficult, we just pile the snow up and there's nowhere for the adjacent property owners to put it because it's down that commercial road.
Right. So. Can they put it in their yard?
Well, Albergs is there, it's.
I guess I'll have to go look at it.
Yeah.
Because I remember years back, when we were going to beautify that street, which we did, but we never put the sign up and made it anything. And there was a meeting that I went to, and the property owners, it was for those property owners to let them know they had to shovel the snow. So.
Yeah, the issue came about when we started paid parking, so in order for the parking meters to be accessible, the crews had to plow the snow tight to the curb line, so what that does is it buries the sidewalk. This is what Robbie attended a few months ago to discuss. Six months ago.
Okay.
So Tom, I'll have to go look. Yeah, is the city gonna move back where the berm, when they plow the streets?
Yeah, that's a great question, you know, in this neighborhood, Tom Water Drive area, the s- the streets are so wide that it generates a ton of snow. And right now, the crew, because they know most people don't shovel the sidewalk, they they tend to push the snow quite a bit from the side.
Right.
But because the roadway's so wide, we have opportunity to keep the snow off the, off the edge of the curb. So and so we're a better, better neighbor.
Gotcha, yeah, yeah, that's what, does it, does it make it more, right? More problematic.
But there are other areas in town where we don't have that luxury, you know, the Ben Street, it's narrow.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a little bit of a bumper strip, I believe, on one side, but it's still, it's on the sidewalk.
Yeah, that street's super narrow.
And if you don't have a sidewalk, like, you don't have to shovel it.
That's right, no.
That's right.
Unless you wanted to go across the street or where there's.
My sorry mind.
This is. Rhonda, you can't be that.
Rhonda, you got a question?
Oh, oh, sure, um, I remember talking about this one of my first meetings I attended. And what a tough question it is, because you know, we live in a town um that doesn't have, not everybody has a sidewalk, so some people be required to, but other people won't be at all. And then um, we also live in a town where the snowbanks sometimes are really, really daunting. I mean, it's hard to get out of our driveways, right, after the city plows. I got a letter from someone that summed it up like this, it just came to me today. Uh, some years we've used a snow saw on the berm that the snowplow puts across our driveway and built in igloo, it's not a fair battle against the machinery that the city has. So you know, thinking about that, uh, we don't have a sidewalk on our street, but thinking about that, for some people, maybe older people or, you know, I I I think it's, it's a really, really heavy lift for some people, and they're just not gonna have the means to do it, and I'm not sure what we do about that.
And and that's where private contractors are an option for folks as well, they can hire out services to assist.
Do you can afford it?
Yeah, those are expensive.
But that's what second homeowners are gonna have to do if they're not here to physically move the snow, right, they're gonna have to hire people to do it.
You know, this um, this, this woman that commented um, said it might be a good idea to take care of the downtown stuff and then let the community have a little time to talk about how they want to handle the streets. I mean, I, you know, I'm always imagining things, so I was thinking, well, maybe on, on, wouldn't be our street because we don't have them, but maybe on somebody's street, like up uh in the mountain roads. So so and so is designated for a month to to take care of it, or you know, community or streets can come together. I don't know, it just seems a little maybe premature to impose this without maybe solving some of the um, the problems that could come up.
So right now, compliance, right, at the end of the day, with ADA, which is.
No, I know, I know.
Uh, Tom, what was the response, so Caris, where East Wenatchee, Shalane? Um, how do they, was there any discussion with those folks about how they deal with non-compliance, how they deal with enforcement?
Yeah.
You know, they don't get the snow we get, but they still get snow.
Yeah, having, having worked at the city of East Wenatchee, so their code compliance officer takes care of them, and it's complaint-driven. So they don't proactively go seek outside walk, but now, keep in mind, that's why I was there, it could have changed, it's been over about three years from now. So what they would do is complaint-driven, so if they get a complaint, they go address it, enforce it.
So they don't hear anything, he doesn't go out.
Right.
Wenatchee's more aggressive than that.
Wenatchee, Wenatchee took a more aggressive approach to where they'll hire a contractor to remove the snow and then they'll re- get lost by building the bobby.
Right, remember that part.
My god. There has to be some, maybe advertised for some groups that have um younger men that can come out. My daughter didn't live with me, that'd be quite a shore out there, probably just have to stay at home all winter. That would be, that would be a big lift.
Do we know what folks, do what folks do like in Whitefish and Helena, when you got snow loads? You know, we're a little different than the rest of the valley, but.
Yeah, I believe, so I, I know Bozeman, City of Bozeman, they require, same, same approach, they require adjacent property owners. And Andy, she went to college there, and she told me that they were very aggressive with code enforcement, if you get your sidewalk, we go by nine or ten o'clock in the morning, they were issuing wow notices.
Really? Hmm. I'm just wondering how to process, I kind of hear what Rhonda's saying is, yeah, it's essential, it's, we need to be ADA compliant. But like, how do we um, this is a brand new, I mean, anytime you start something new like this is uh, we gotta face, we, we gotta face it, but like, how do we, how do we face it?
I, I, I need to double check, but I think prior to twenty thirteen, it was required.
I, yeah, I remember, because when I was hired and lived here, I was told that all residents have to clear a sidewalk if it's in front of their property, and my husband did it. So I'm.
Really? Red initial, sidewalks had to be cleared by.
Right, and that. By the property owner, in front of their property, yeah.
And because I re- I reviewed the minutes in preparation for the January discussion, and if I recall correctly, in twenty thirteen, they changed it to require, it's only commercial because that was the, was foot traffic was primary, yeah, so they didn't want to burden the residents. And again, the issue goes back to federal ADA regulations.
Yeah.
Whitefish, you asked about Whitefish, they require all residents and businesses to remove the snow from their sidewalks within twenty-four hours.
Huh.
I think that's fairly typical.
Yep.
Yeah.
It is, it's related to the game, typical Massachusetts.
Well, I mean, we've had this discussion on snow. It's multiple times, how do we do that?
Uh, I mean, of course, there's, I think I've laid out options before, I mean, the city can take over all sidewalk snow, but if you have costs.
Right, yeah.
That's how, how to put it.
Right.
Contract it out, but that is gonna eat into the city street fund, which is same funding source that's used to maintain the roadways for paving and capital projects.
Right, it's not, no, I don't see as affording, affording anything like that. Uh, I'm just thinking uh that maybe perhaps, these guys get a heads up sometime before it happens, that's what I mean, you know, and their input of some kind, just so they don't get slammed with it and go, what are you, what are you doing, you know, and that's what I think is coming down.
Was there a heads up given ten years ago, when, when they were asked to do it the first, like, not kind of, but ten years, that discussion?
Yeah, it, it was updated in twenty thirteen.
Okay.
I'm questioning whether there was a mistake made in the update. Um, another thing councils have done, even passed is with enforcement, so you can pass your code, but then you're very soft on the enforcement side.
Yeah.
You give time for people to understand, you don't just go penalize either way.
First snowstorm, you slam them, you don't, yeah, you don't do that, right?
Would there be a way to generate some revenue to help out people who are unable to do this type of activity, but also can't really afford to hire a private contractor to do it? Um, is there some way?
Hmm.
I mean, we have three different enterprise funds essentially in our monthly city bill that we get, right? Um, is there a way for us to potentially add on another, like a city snow removal fee of some sort that would generate revenue for the city to be able to start removing snow for, for people?
The problem with that is, the problem with that is that for us to do, it's more expensive than a private contractor. Privates can get away cheaper than we can. I mean, you're, you're talking, again, city public works.
It is only a few months out of the year, where we have to buy equipment that last year, we have employees that last.
No, I know, but it could be an annual fee, but then we just tap into it in the winter.
For enterprise contractors.
Yeah, I'd see it be if we in the parking, because that's the enterprise fund for that type, uh, the street fund is not in the first fund.
Mm-hmm.
Just the makeup of the fact that it gets most of its revenue from retail sales staff, so it's a lot, it's a different type of fund. But if if we wanted to go down that route, I would see it as coming into the parking fund and then going out through services, I would put.
Yeah, I'm just curious if there's a way that you could do something like that.
And we have to some kind of workflow and SOP to determine who qualifies and manage that.
And from that aspect, it would probably make no sense to contract it out, because you're only collecting so much.
And then, you know, I just I know Rick has tried this in the past before I started, but trying to secure private contractors is not necessarily the easy button. Sometimes they're hooked up before the winter, and if you need services kind of haphazardly, they may be too busy.
Yeah.
The line record is not always the line.
Well, the stormwater fund started at fifty cents a month.
Yeah.
I don't know where it is now, but it's not fifty cents.
Is the schedule of, of fines for not shoveling your sidewalk? Can that be made available to cover this cost? So.
So if there's someone who has a second home here and they forget about it, they get a fine, will that fine, can that go into a fund in the community to help pay for other peoples?
Again, the parking fund would be the proper fund, because.
I'll make you feel, I'll shovel my sidewalk if you, um, scoops a burn.
Give and take, yeah, you can, yeah.
I was gonna say, I like the, the direction of this conversation, because like so many things in life, I wish it wasn't this way, but, you know, it's all these shades of solution that are gonna create the benefit for the most people, and so now we're starting to brainstorm. Um, it could be anything from a super, super bad, heavy snow, the city does plow a little extra that time, I know that's happened last winter. Um, we have a newsletter, we should make the announcement early, say, hey, we have to do this, you know? We could invite churches, for instance, or other groups in the city to maybe, um, start providing services. Blocks could talk about it, um, and, and Anne's idea is good, so I like that we're brainstorming, and I think we'll probably do the best if we announce pretty soon that this is gonna happen, so that people can feel prepared and come up with good solutions.
Great point, we have talked with the seniors better in the past about them having a list, and last year we talked with Rotary. Rotary had said they would, but I don't think they told them, they made a permission.
They actually were interested in something like that?
Yeah. And that was just to go out and shovel for people.
Right.
Yeah, so maybe as a small town, that's something we can do together, and, and it can be presented soon or sooner than later at a community engagement night or something. So that people are more ready for it, and they feel like, you know, okay, I've got a solution, I've got a friend that's gonna help me, and we can come together as a community, cause it is the law, so, you know, we need to not keep ignoring it. So anyway, I think this is a good direction, having lots of ideas.
You know, there's, yeah, you, you, you think of, um, you know, communities organize block watches, you know, where you look out for each other and things, you can also do, you know, uh, a shovel watch or whatever, I mean, you, you help each other out, I mean, our, quite frankly, I mean, our block. We all take care of each other and get it, build the best with snowbore across the street, cause I don't have a sidewalk and but it gets pawed by the city too on one street, but, but anyway, I'm just saying, it can be a kind of a block by block thing too, so.
Yeah.
So many of the, uh, groups that we have anymore, the members are all old. We're not getting the young people, I don't know where they're going, but they're not coming into.
Do we need service hours for snow removal?
I think a block watch might be a part of the solution, I mean, if you see people where you might be stepping up, they're, cause they know the people and the neighborhood, so that could help to some extent.
Is, is there anything I could bring back for further dis- for, for the discussion on this?
I would love to know the history of the code change, if you guys can dig into why it originally was required and then went away in twenty thirteen, that would be really helpful. Let me know the context. Is it a, is it a recording error, or was there actually a contextual conversation about removing that?
If I recall correctly, the minutes read in the sense that they felt council at the time felt that the majority of the foot traffic was downtown, and they didn't want to burden residents with having to remove sidewalks now, so they intentionally made it commercial only, but I'll refresh.
When did this ADA requirement come into play?
So if there's a street with a sidewalk on both sides, can we make it just the odd numbered houses that have to clear their sidewalk? That was for shades.
Look at that, our city administrator's on a shovel your own sidewalk neighborhood.
Okay, no, it sounds good, well, um, so this is early June.
But yeah, it should come back, yeah, and if we're gonna do it to, like, what I said, get it out there.
Well, we have a cloud truck. I was thinking that for the cloud truck, there'd be a reason to talk about snow in the eight of August.
All right, well, we'll move on then to ownership options in residential zones, Willa.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The planning commission held a public hearing last week on the option to provide condominiums into residential zones. It was a healthy discussion, we had quite a bit of comment come in after the staff report, but before the hearing. And we had some comment after the hearing as well. Lots of good points brought up. So I'm bringing this to, today to make you aware that they are recommending adoption of the condominium processed for residential structure, so this is most likely including single-family homes and detached accessory blowing units would probably be the first choices of converting. Because they don't have to retrofit the structures to be the fire separation requirements, have separate blowing units. Uh, so it will provide an opportunity for smaller lot or ownership, different type of ownership of housing. Since they're smaller units, most likely they'd be less expensive. Looking at any rational posting of the cost of a home in our area, you can see that the smaller units do come in at vast money. Having said that, there are some people feel this won't save any money for people, but I just don't I just don't see that as being the case, it will save money for people and get their foot in the door in the form of ownership. There were concerns related to, you know, upkeep of the property, especially when it's a small condominium complex. But if there are options for those associations to be managed by other parties, doesn't have to just be the two owners there, or the two or three owners, if it happens to convert a larger, small missing middle type housing. What I provided for you in the packet was the original approved planning commission minutes from April and May, which was where we had some discussions on this topic. I also included in there the staff report for the hearing. And then I emailed you the updated transmittal memo, I will attach this to all of these documents again when you have your hearing on it. But the transmittal memo includes the draft minutes from the hearing and all of the written color comments that you received, so. If you've had an opportunity to look through that, you'll see it's been a, been a good discussion. Overall, the planning commissioners felt like it's gonna be a benefit, it doesn't change the look and appearance of any structure. And it doesn't provide any new density, those structures already have to be built and in place before they condominiumize, so they have to meet our zoning standards. Those were some of the big concerns, and I wanna turn this time over to you to see if you have any questions on this, on your next packet. At the end of June, we will be requesting a hearing date. If, if, if you're okay with that, so, but today is just question and answer on the proposal.
Questions? You say start with ADUs, because it's, it's easier than, they're separated for the, the fire guidelines. What if there was a duplex that was built? On the assumption that someday in the future, we're gonna be able to sell this duplex as condos in the town of Leopold, and they were built according to those code. That's, that, that will still, they can still, if we pass this, go be sold.
Oh, for sure, yes.
Okay, so they build it ahead of time, yes, you're thinking that and ha- and planning for that and. So not just ADUs, start with ADUs, it encompasses everything, I just wanna make sure, okay.
It does.
Yeah.
And that's what Pete Olson, who made the request that we review this now, uh, did with the
Yeah.
zero lot mine development that he did, which was two single-family homes with two attached blowing units, essentially it looks like a townhome development.
Right.
But those were all built to the higher standard with fire separation from attic to basement.
Yep, okay. Just wanna clarify, when you said start with ADU, but this is all encompassing, not just ADUs, and then we're gonna do something later, this is all.
If it was just, um, a more normal ADU addition to a home, it would require that same
Yeah.
level of separation, so going back and retrofitting would be more problematic or more difficult than, yeah, than a separate AD. Is the point there, but.
Willa, Allison brought up the whole thing about the binding site plan at the meeting. I, I just wanted to kinda get an idea. That's, so I'm looking at it, and it says the, the binding site plan processes provides the opportunity for the public comments and allows the city to have oversight of the process to ensure appropriate standards such as parking zoning regulations are being satisfied. So basically, is that the role of the, of the, of the, um, binding site plan is just to make sure that kind of thing is happening, you know?
Yes, currently we allow condominiums to be created in the multifamily and in the commercial zones. And when those are created, they go through a city binding site plan process. And that allows us to notify people, kinda dig into the details, make sure the structure was legally created, that the parking matches the structure, and, you know, other minor details. So that's the process for which the condominium is created in the city of Leopold. Most jurisdictions don't have a process. You just go to the state and we can condominiumize anything. Most jurisdictions without notification to the jurisdiction.
How long is the binding site plan process and how expensive is it?
Um, I believe it's eight hundred dollar flat fee and fifty a lot, that might have turned up like the last last update you did for rent fee. But, uh, it doesn't take too long, generally just a couple of months at the outset.
Is there a less onerous process that we might have as an opportunity? I mean, cause these structures are gonna require building permits, can we just review that through the building permit process, instead of going through another process?
No, there, there are separate steps, um, there's, there's separate steps and processes, one, though the building is just a construction. Of course, we need them to go to that higher standard.
Right.
Or convert, uh, but the creation of a new lot is defined by subdivision or binding site plan. Uh, the attorney, city attorney has said that it doesn't have to be a binding site plan, we could do these as short lots. But the notification or, or, the notification process on that's a little bit more. The last binding site plan we did was for Icicle. Uh, they built so many units in the back, and those were condominiumized. It took a little bit longer because they hadn't identified that when they were going through the construction process. So we have a few little challenges, making sure that they met the ADA compliance standard. But once we got that resolved, it was just a couple of weeks.
When you say Icicle, that was, who was that?
Icicle Village, that's the resort, yeah.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, back behind the hotel, they put in some new units, so.
So you're buying site plan controls that make sure the parking's sufficient, cause this is two different ownerships, so you gotta have they're not gonna share the same driveway, most likely.
Well, they can.
They can, but they gotta have space for two occupancies at all.
Gotta make sure that you're being sound. The reason why I keep bringing up parking is because originally when the city adopted condominium process through a binding site plan, it's one of the condos down by the river, and they altered their parking lot when they condominiumized. And that was inconsistent with the approved building. And I think that's the reason why we have this process in place now. It really is quite simple review process, if they built it to the right construction.
Is that the Alpenblut apartments you're talking about?
Someone's at the end of Division. Alpenblut.
Alpenblut, I think they have some difficulties over the property, um, where the parking was with, um, what's his name?
Yeah. We don't wanna think.
Okay.
Okay. Rona?
Oh, yeah, um, I think I need to understand, first of all, um, what it, when, when we say condominium, um, can you explain to me what the relationship is between the people that own a condominium on the same lot? Are, are they, are they in relationship in any way?
It's a homeowners association.
Okay, so, but just to help me, you know, so here's an example, there's, I'm, a duplex, and it has an ADU behind it, and it's sold as three different properties, would that be possible?
Yes.
Okay, and then they have to create a homeowners association between the three of them on a sixty by hundred foot lot or something. Is that how it would work?
Yeah, when they condominiumize, the paper trail requires the homeowners association to be outlined and established, and then everybody who buys those units buys into the condominium and the homeowners association. So they're given all those rules when they purchase the property. They get to review it and decide if they're wanting to participate in that homeowners association and manage that property that way before they buy it.
Okay, um, and so right now we allow condos, but not in, um, I don't know what we call it anymore, RL six or not in, what do we call the least dense neighborhood in town now?
We, the R six and the R eight, the residential, zoning districts do not allow for condominiums.
Right, okay, so, so right now we allow them, and they seem to be working well, they're selling well, and people people use them a lot, and they, they can't become second homes, right?
Well, we don't regulate food purchases.
Ah, okay, so anyway, we're doing that now, and the idea is to just do it everywhere, so like, if I have a little old house next to me, which I kind of do, um, and now we have cottage housing, someone could come into the lot next to us and build four homes there and sell them as condos, is, would that be what we're voting for?
Yes, that's been happened.
And so, you know, this idea of density, some people say it's not, it's less, it's not any more density, but I, I can't quite see it that way because more parking is required, meaning more paving is required, so I don't see it being equal in density, because if separate families are living there, aren't they going to have more cars and more stuff? I, I, I don't understand that way of thinking, can you explain that to me?
Well, the unit hasn't changed in purpose or type or size. So if you're renting it to, say, four different families, and then it'll be the same density if they own, if they decide to purchase those condominiums instead of rent them, it's the same density, same size building, same.
Yeah, okay, I, I get that, but I guess I, in my example of the duplex with the, the ADU behind it, for instance, you know, probably everyone wants one or two places for cars. So one of my concerns about our neighborhoods, and I don't know if anyone shares this on the council, actually, I've been thinking about it since our last conversation about cottage housing. Um, and I don't think I've ever said it really, but one of my huge concerns is, is an environmental concern. The idea of, um, species that live in our valley, and trees that provide shade, and vegetation, and permeability, and, uh, you know, the well-documented benefit to humanity from having plants around, for instance. And, and I, and I think that with this, um, and I felt the same way about cottage housing, I didn't vote for it at the time, cause I just had so much going on and I wasn't well, I couldn't think about it, but it's just a huge concern of mine. So to trade the feeling of a neighborhood and to motivate a builder to tear down the little old house next door to us and put in units like this with no guarantee of environmental sensitivity in the ways I'm speaking of or of quote affordability, um, it, it doesn't appeal to me that much, and I think that, um, you know, there's reasons that, that that's the case. So I, I just wanna, I just wanna say that I think one way that we've really been dragging as a council is not understanding the environmental ramifications of our choices about density.
Thank you, Rona, for your comments.
You're welcome.
Yeah, there are questions?
What would the advantage be to have your property and you live on your property? And then you decide you're gonna put condos on your property. And so now you have an HOA with, is that equal participation from everybody in the E E HOA? What would be the gain there for the original property owner that's still there?
If, let's say, you have an ADU above your garage.
Mm-hmm.
Did you find yourself in a financial hardship and you needed a large influx of cash? You could sell that ADU as a just, as a completely different property and make whatever the money, whatever the amount would be. Um, and then you, yes, you would have to enter into a homeowners association with you and whomever else is on that property. As far as the dues go, a lot of times they're equal, sometimes they're based on the size of the unit, so a larger unit will pay more in HOA fee than a smaller unit.
Does the larger unit have more power as a voting member on the board?
If you had three, two ADUs on your property and you lived in one and rented out the other and owned it. And then sold the third, then yeah, you'd have, you'd have the majority.
Two thirds majority vote.
These are state guidelines.
Right.
Talking about condo stuff, right?
Yeah.
And so even within the property and how big it is and how much you're required to chip in for the commons basis, make sure that the dirt is kept up, I mean, it's it's state regulated. All that condo stuff.
Well, I have to ask Carl, as hard as you have worked and as long as you have worked on affordable housing. Like last week, last meeting, um, I'm wondering. There has to be a way, and if there's anybody that can find it, it would be you, um, to be able to um. Not to stop anybody from buying affordable place. So that it becomes unaffordable, I'm I'm not saying that right. Yeah. Kind of like um Kerrol was saying in her letter that she um sent to the council. That if there's no guarantee that what you're, what you have is going to end up being affordable. And so are you working on that?
Well, and I think, I mean, at the housing committee, yeah. Zeke, you remember this and and Jordan and others of us would say, and and men, Caitlin would come here and say. That what's gonna keep these and make these affordable and keep them affordable is bringing subsidies to the table. That we can buy and put it into the community land trust and they can then make sure that they're trying to stay affordable. But without any kind of. Uh, a tool to bring subsidies in and grab up and put them into the land trust or something similar. That would restrict the deeds to keep them that way. Open markets are open markets and they'll go to the, you know, whatever level and that people are willing to pay for them. That's that's our system, right? It's it's market driven and. Um, we are in a hot market, um, where we're in desirable locations, so the only way that we can keep that from. From disappearing completely is to bring money to the table and that's why I will continue to work. At a funding stream that we can say, we can funnel it through men, they can, you know, build these things or or grab them. Existing like they did with the rentals, they could do that with homeownership opportunities if they had subsidy money to be able to grab them. And say now we're gonna maintain them for the community and for our permanent residents. Um, and make sure they stay affordable, but yeah, that's the only mechanism I know of. Um, is putting them into some deed restricted, um, so that it gets people an opportunity to get their foot in the door and. You know, own something and build some equity, and then from there they can go into the other, the normal market eventually, you know, they build it up.
I guess I would feel better, and if I could take my vote back and it's abstained for last week, I would. On that premise, that, and it wouldn't made any difference, but it would have made a difference to me.
Right.
Because the more I thought about, the more I was mad at myself for doing that, um. I'm not in favor, I'm in favor of affordable housing, but not when it can be gobbled up, it's almost feels useless. Um, you're you're defeating the the purpose of affordable housing if you can't have them affordable and they can't. And if, you know, you are.
Right.
If your income is way too above that, shouldn't be able to snuck snap in and snarf up. Stuff if we're working on on this project and I feel like until we do that, maybe we should hold off, I don't know.
Well, and I mean, and again, some of that testimony last week said that though, that with the cottages and things that uh. Putting a cluster of cottages together, that's not usually what second homeowners want is to live in a. Cluster with, you know, a s- a small space, there there are people that want. And can can afford for the most, most of the people that are coming here, come here with money and can buy those. Seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar homes, so they're not gonna look for a small cottage.
Well, that may be all they have.
Well, and at some point, in in the meantime, we'll have the dollars then to grab them ourselves and keep them affordable, but. Right now, you're right, I mean, right now, anything we do, anything we do will not guarantee affordability, nothing. Because it's just, things are too expensive. Rhona?
Yeah, thanks, um, you know, the cottage housing idea that got voted for, um. I like the idea that it could be a bunch of rentals, it would have to be a bunch of rentals, I actually thought that was quite beneficial. Um, and in terms of the land trust, Carl, and other ideas to guarantee more affordability. I like those ideas, um, I agree with Sharon that and and what you just said, you just said it's market driven. I think it's premature to put condominiums and that kind of um building uh incentive. Into all neighborhoods at this time, I don't think we're ready to do that. I mean, you may feel ready because like, okay, well, some of them will be cheaper, but when we think about what that means, it might mean that they cost. Four hundred fifty or five hundred thousand rather than eight hundred fifty thousand, which a little three bedroom, two bath just went for down the street from me. That still isn't affordable, so I think it's premature to let this happen now and let the market drive it. Without us being more prepared for it in various ways.
Right now, four hundred thousand dollar to five hundred thousand dollar home. When, we're not, we're not seeing people spending thirty percent of their household income on housing, we're seeing fifty percent national, I mean, people are spending more, so. I've got my son who works for me, living in my attic, my wife and I have income, we have three incomes for our household. I I think that, I think that nationally, I think for Leavenworth, that's a five hundred thousand dollar home is affordable. And the median home is seven hundred sixty seven thousand dollars, that that is affordable. To be families that, and families do live together with a couple generations, I have a couple generations in my house, I know other people have in the past too.
But people want an opportunity to not have to do that, they want to be able to have an opportunity to own their own home. And this is a great viable opportunity for people to actually do that, to start getting in on ownership. Because they are smaller units, you don't own the land by yourself, you own your housing unit and it drops the price.
Yeah, you can build your wealth in.
Absolutely, you start, you start gaining equity and you start gaining more opportunities.
Yep.
And I can bring the presentation, there was a wonderful presentation City of Snohomish did talking about. You know, during your lifespan, you know, small rental makes sense when you're just getting out of school. And it's a small unit, then you find somebody, you move into something new, you have a family. And then it progressed through the family, the life stages of most people, um. And that's, that's what we're looking to do here is to give people the hold in. And for those on the other side who family has left or whatever, they need to downsize, they'll have more opportunity there too.
Yeah, on, I mean, to your point on the flip side, they're great opportunities for people interested in downsizing too. That don't wanna be solely in charge of their lawn maintenance and their snow removal and those sorts of things. Uh, a lot of, a lot of retired people are looking for condominium opportunities. So that they can downsize from their large home and all of the maintenance requirements associated with that and pull into. You know, those sorts of things, they don't have to do them solely on their own, and it's, it would be a great opportunity for that demographic within the Leavenworth as well.
Well, bring this back to you, um, for next meeting, I'm just uh. Set the date for the hearing and we would anticipate at this time, the hearing date, July ninth, we'll we'll look through their calendar on that. Look that on the next meeting if it works out.
I have something that I'd like to add, I'm reading um an email from Brian Gray. And I was curious, are we concerned with, you know, uh. Owners who have duplexes or triplexes, you know, turning them them into condos and then those. Uh, properties aren't available for rent anymore, so how many, how many rentals are we gonna lose with this condo option? If if the owners decide to go condo.
So there's a couple of points to be considered with that and. I wanna start with the fact that a lot of our multifamily dwelling units, triplexes and duplexes. Were owned by Marson Marson and now are under mint, but the few that are remaining out there. They would require substantial cost to convert, to make them up to compliance. It's a good opportunity for older building to be upgraded, um, but the owners would have to have been collecting enough. Rent to make that work as well.
Right.
And the other thing, and we talked about the planning commission was, we have more rental units online now. And coming online than we have in our history, with the two hundred back there and the three sixty eight there. So I I think we have plenty of rental unit options, they're all market rate, whether they're in the neighborhood now or the new ones coming on. So. They, the new ones coming on are gonna be higher because they're newer units, so there is a. There is a small opportunity or chance for displacement of some renters. That.
Right.
That may may happen, so it has to be weighed to what extent. From my perspective, it seems like it's rather small, like I said, I don't think most owners are ready to take on that big financial commitment of regenerating the unit, but.
Like you said, even the new ones, the cost of construction, whatever, there's a reality of the cost of construction just went up, so it just. It's gone up significantly in the past several years, it's just.
What units are you talking about, are you talking about Widener or?
The new ones, yeah.
Which aren't gonna be affordable, are they?
No.
In there, but they're all market rate. But so are the ones in our current neighborhoods that are in.
Can we sometime, instead of comparing that cell, just Snohomish or someplace like that, compare ourselves to a town of two thousand.
Very few towns doing all that we do it to.
Yeah, right.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to.
Snohomish is like five thousand people.
I actually don't think, I actually don't think it's a bad comparison because we have over two million visitors, we can't compare ourselves to a small two thousand, twenty five hundred town. That doesn't have tourists on it.
Right, I think we can, because for what what we're doing. The tourists don't count when we're in our own community deciding on condos and whatever. The tourists are downtown and they're, you know, in the neighborhood or whether we're walking around, but they they don't, they don't count in this. I guess I do feel like we're being swished and crowded and cramped and I don't know.
Sharon, the 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 difference though is that. Most communities, if you say, yeah, we're that small, but um, when you're talking about forty percent. Owned by second out of our area owners, because we're a desirable place, that's the difference. Most towns twenty five hundred, they're competing with one another over their house, they're not competing with the rest of the world. That wants to come in and buy those houses up, so that's a huge difference and that's what puts pressure on and that's why they're going at. Eight hundred thousand dollars instead of, you know, five hundred.
And so you don't think they won't eventually, and probably soon, if we put in affordable housing, you know, then they're affordable. That as a second home, they're not gonna snap that up?
They wouldn't qualify for it.
Not, not if we.
How can they not?
Not those that we grab and and. Yeah, we put deed restrictions that say you must live here. I mean, men, men, they're, they've only got the two ten home units, right, so twenty homes, but you have to live in it. You gotta be a permanent resident, so that's what's gonna drive. You know, whatever we're able to do is gonna be driven by being able to control it. And the only way I know that you can get control is to bring dollars to the table, you can't just write it with a pen saying, we're not gonna allow it. You know, because you're right, people will still come from the outside, they'll buy it all up, and that's what they've been doing, that's the, that's the pathway we've been on. Um, because when I started with with the share housing, we were still only at twenty percent. Of our homes were second homes and I I saw danger there, right, well, we've doubled that since that time.
So how are you gonna stop it?
Get dollars, that's what I'm working at, so that we can grab them.
And part of these, part of these tools too, a city like Leavenworth needs more tools and more options for different types of housing. Because we have so much demand, so these tools are allowing for the smaller units, which are less desirable for second homes. If we compare ourselves to Indiana, the average home price there right now is four twenty, they're up three percent from last year. Leavenworth average cost according to the same similar pool is eight seventy. Eight hundred and seventy thousands are.
Mm-hmm.
And we trended up ten percent in the last year. So we're growing harder and faster, I can't use the city of Indiana rules. They're not working as hard as we are to get as many tools as we are because they don't need to.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and they won't have them on the books, so it's really difficult to compare to smaller cities that aren't tourist driven. But having said that, this one tool is on the books, we'll come back to it, I know we're past our time, so I'll leave it there. It's available if you want to talk more offline.
Thanks, Lilith. Yeah, thanks.
Right of way protection discussion.
Projections in the right of way, yes, this came to, this came to the city council in April. If you remember, we were talking about the law, putting a balcony over the sidewalk and the Baron House doing the extended balcony over the sidewalk. Very lovely drawings of, and I walked away from that with the impression that city council supports the opportunity. The only item that was not addressed was cost, uh, we do require. Lease agreements for use of the sidewalk and the public right of way. Um, we've been giving this some thought, we talked about it at the management team. I'd like to propose to the city council that we not charge a per square feet rate for projections over the right of way. In my time here, it feels like it would become a bit of a battle between the owner, what is the square footage? How often were they using it for commercial purposes versus non-commercial purposes? And the the one thing we really need to just cover is our cost of issuing. And maintaining that permit to make sure they have their insurance, they're gonna be required to do a yearly lease agreement with the city. So I was going to propose a five to six hundred dollar yearly fee. Associated with getting that agreement together and maintaining it. For commercial use over the public right of way.
Questions, discussion?
Are you thinking of just, just to get the program started so they can get them up and then maybe revisit that? Or did you wanna just leave it at just the cost that the commercial person has to pay, but only. Deal with issuing the the the, the cost of issuing the permit, we wouldn't get into the square footage ever?
Yes, I would think it would just be on the rate and fee stage, also you would update it periodically as the cost of administering that program might increase. But it would just retain as a flat fee covering our administrative costs. We will benefit from that additional commercial space over the right of way through taxes and collection and. Maybe even more importantly, from my perspective, just due to the patient of the downtown, it's very Bavarian, it's. Gonna be a nice space, so long as we're covering our cost and we'll get the other benefit. I wanted to throw that out as a recommendation.
What are these projections, are they all exactly the same?
No.
Some balconies over sidewalks, so at at the meeting, we, we discussed. Baron House, we'd like to do an addition and the law would like to do an addition. Which would have balconies that would generate commerce that were over our sidewalk, we have some existing.
We have some existing ones called checks uh as a projection of our sidewalk. That they do see people on. Um they're not cracking the example. They have. Some projections of the sidewalk of balconies for their apartments on. Those aren't commercially used spaces. Would be considered multifamily housing to be a commercial venture.
What is our insurance say and what are the safety issues?
They they touched on that a little bit in April. An insurance company is concerned. Um you know, there's a higher likely bit of things coming off the balcony when it's used for a restaurant or a bar. Um but having said that, uh. My takeaway from the last council meeting was that was less of a concern to the council as a whole and adding a projection was favorable.
I don't know if there's still a lot of bar brawls at the um at that one establishment, but if um. Somebody got thrown over or fell over as a result of somebody punching them or something. Are we liable for anything there?
Uh well, we're not supposed to be and that's why we get the insurance and have the agreement, but at any point people can bring the city in. And they'll want to bring the city in because you have the digital pockets in the restaurant. So we'll have to defend ourselves at some point.
So it'd be totally all open air, no wire mesh to. Make it against and fall back in the building.
Trampoline.
But there would be code and building requirements.
Yeah, balconies, the balconies aren't too big.
Yeah.
Well, and it's in that business's interest to not let that happen. I mean, they're gonna do their own policing because that'll be the worst thing that would happen to them. They. They're they would get sued as well, first of all, and then. Um and that, again, they would they may come after the city, but it will do more damage in the long run to that business than it would. To us as a.
As a business, they've been talked to or they know anything about it so that maybe there are some of them that that would, you know. Basically say hello. I don't want uh uh. You know, that beside my building. Again, it looks like we're pushing as much as we can into one space.
Almost every building on Front Street already has a projection.
And that people are using and standing on on outside?
No.
No.
Not necessarily, but there are a lot of projections that.
There's a bunch.
That are already used by human occupancy for for businesses of many different kinds. Um like the Net Carker Museum Building. That the third floor extends pretty much all the way over the sidewalk on Eighth Street.
Is that with a balcony or just part of the of of room?
The whole structure and they also have like an open air balcony area too. And then right across the street for Colchucks, their restaurant extends out over the sidewalk.
And so were those permitted at some time earlier?
They were.
There's never been a charge.
This would just apply to new projections though, right? We're not gonna retroactively charge people.
We talked last time about doing some retroactive. What we're doing right now for the projections that are not commerce driven. Is when they come in and they're making a modification to their structure or requiring to address the lease agreement. Okay, so we can build it away in policy.
Leasing the rights, the air rights.
Their rights. So are who are they leasing them from? And so we're being paid money for them being.
Uh we currently don't require money to be charged, but we haven't had any that were commercial enterprises. There's just been work overhangs essentially or. Yeah. We can afford extensions.
And what you're suggesting, Lilith, we don't charge them uh square footage. We just charge them for processing the permit.
That's an annual annual fee?
Yeah.
Okay, so once we have them in place, let's say there's fifteen of them out there right now. Would you go and create something for the fifteen or go to the grand public then?
Well, that's a policy direction.
Until they make a change in the structure, then we would.
Yeah, potentially we can manage it that way. We have the two requests right now. So it's a bill.
That's what's driving this.
Yeah, it likes some answers.
And so you're saying we wouldn't charge for how big it was, it would be the same charge, excuse me, for every and everybody, no matter what. Is there a distance away from the building or?
Well, that's all managed under the bill on their building code regulations.
Okay.
It's not for any post.
Yeah, not New Orleans.
Right, so basically, if it's someone may have ten square feet, but someone else may have four square feet, but they're both gonna pay the same.
Can that be changed?
Will be on the rate and fee schedule.
Everything can be changed.
But I mean, changed on the people that are already there.
Oh, well, through rate and fee, that's how you change, but. If you guys put in pre-existing, then those would be stuck with just the annual fee process. Well, you can increase the annual fee.
I like this staff recommendation. I think it's I think it's a good path. I'd love to know what staff thinks about how far back we would technically go if we're gonna do something retroactive. I mean, almost every building has something, so.
Right.
I'm curious how you're gonna. Suppose something like that. Would it be based on when it was constructed or something or?
Or just start it when we start the other fees?
Well, or if they do improvements on the building, we can capture. Some some buildings will avoid improvements just to avoid any additional fee slash tax.
Well, this would be pretty trivial in the grand scheme of things, but.
Right, yeah. Like the law already does have a small projection, but what the proposal was was a larger balcony than what it currently exists.
And it's only the commercial that they're proposing the fee with, so.
Right.
Non-commercial projections would still do the process as we come across them.
Well, I I personally think that if they're like Colchuck, if they're using it for commercial space. Rather than waiting for them to come and redo it, which would only tend to to let them try to ignore it and put it off so that it deteriorates. Is just start them in with everybody and just saying we're now charging for overhangs that are used as commercial space and this the annual fee.
Like balconies that are attached to commercial space. You know, things that are actually actually functional, because some of them are just aesthetic.
Yeah, no, if it's functional, commercial space, it's functioning as commercial space, then I think it should be. Retro and everybody. Gets put in the same situation.
That feels fair. It also feels fair not to go after the people who just have the like fake balconies outside of a window that never, no one ever accesses.
Right, yeah, it's just aesthetic.
So this isn't connected liability wise at all. To the issue of the uh snow hill and there was something under the ground and somebody went over it and sued the city. So it's not connected to that story. Yeah, okay.
So I actually, having these overhangs, we'd have a plus snow on those sidewalks there. Yeah, it's a fair problem.
Oh, yeah.
They're not gonna shovel back in their.
Well, no, but they're not. It's the part that's covered is will stay covered.
Or did you have a comment on this?
Uh yeah, the two things. One is um I'm glad I could join you for the study session tonight. I did have neck surgery. Um the scar is down, the bandage is down here. On Friday and I'm kind of wearing out, so I was hoping to do both, but I'm gonna have to go lie down now. So I appreciate that I could be here with you and. I should be recovered in about a week or two and so hopefully. I won't have any more huge medical issues like I've had for months since I got on the council. Um anyway, so I'm gonna check out after this, but my question about. The balconies is, did we decide how wide do they were over the street? Have we agreed on how far they can come out?
Well, it it comes down to the building code. So so long as they can do the projection without. Without requiring footings onto the public freeway, but the city council also talked about matching the sidewalk.
Okay. So they can they can cantilever it or or match. We haven't we haven't totally decided yet. Is that right? Hello?
Did I miss something?
Something was brought out last.
I don't think we had fully come to a decision on that. We'd kind of left it open for further conversation.
Oh, okay. I just couldn't remember. Okay, thanks.
Did was get the two that were offering what theirs would be in. Basically was I. Nobody had an issue with what they were proposing.
Okay, I just. Not have it be too too wide over the street, that's all.
Yeah, wouldn't go over the street.
Is there a noise ordinance involved in this? Like the um Alpine Coaster could have the acoustic music, but it has to be inside at. Eight o'clock or whatever the time was. So is it, would there be a noise ordinance or would you have competing bands and what have you?
Our our existing code that addresses noise would still apply. This would change any of that. So no outdoor amplifiers?
But they could play guitar and sing on the tab or something like that.
It could serenade you.
I don't know. I'm a little worried about the noise, the noise. Everybody playing the guitar was gonna ramp down so that they're.
I think it's a worthwhile move to go against, yeah. It simplifies things by a lot, so. And I think the risks are minimal.
All right, well, that wraps up our time here. Let's take a quick break.
Hi, I'm well, something for a future item.
Okay, what?
I'd like to begin a discussion on um. Long-term rentals where landlord uh cannot increase the rent more than ten percent. And then as well, if that if that lease agreement is already month to month and they choose to evict and sell that property for whatever reason. They have ninety days, not thirty day notice, ninety days to allow that person to find another home and move. See, White Salmon in Washington has already said precedent and I believe they even defended it once. And the state of Washington is good with this, so I think this is something that can be. Be good for our community and uh. Not not too hard, difficult to defend, like to.
Yeah, put it on the. Uh study session.
Yeah, thanks.
It is on the list. It's just.
It is on our list, but it's not.
Yeah.
It. All right, we'll take a quick break and be back here in a few minutes. I've called ordered a meeting of the Leavenworth City Council for June eleventh. Please stand to the pledge of allegiance. Sharon?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Cole?
Sharon Waters.
Anne Hesper.
St. Reister.
Shane Thayer.
Travis Bassett.
Great. Um and we, you heard from Rona that she has worn herself out after her surgery. Um we also had a request from Plant. Um again, to be excused, but the good news is that his wife is on the. Last of her two week schedule and July second will be her last chemo and. Then it should be, if all stays and it's looking good, um we should be close to the end for him, but I would ask for a motion to excuse. Yeah, it's been moved and seconded. If all in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously, we'll move on to the concern agenda.
I have a couple of questions. Try, I think they're brief ones. Let me see, where are they? They're in the council payable.
Ten four.
Four and the first one is. On page two. Um H C waist liner bags.
So that's for our big belly garbage cans down there. Those are the bats that go.
I knew it would be simple. Next one on page five. Community meals and exercise, Leavenworth Fund GF grant.
That was a Leavenworth Fund grant that was applied for um and approved to the Leavenworth Senior Center.
Oh, okay, good. I like that. Okay, on page eight. Down near the bottom on the right, staff development, who moved my cheese books?
Yeah, that's a great little book. That's about an hour to uh to read. Um and I ended up buying these for management and for basically most of our staff, not a hundred percent of them. Um and it's a little story about. Two humanoids and two mice and what they do when cheese that they're used to eating is gone one day. It's about.
Should we have that too?
You guys, you guys want me to get you a little bit of cheese?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
All right, we're gonna do who my.
It's a special study session at some point.
City Council.
Okay, on page seven, um fourteen thousand and twenty six dollars and seventy cents, security improvements. What would those be?
So Tom can elaborate on this one, but Cybus is a company that came to help us install these nifty little knock locks. And so these were additional ones down at the um shop, the park, city hall and the parking.
And the fest hall one falls under the city hall funded one.
But fourteen thousand?
Yeah, they're they're expensive. It's these little keys.
Yeah.
You know, shit, right, with those locks. And they're not cheap, but they're far cheaper than what I was asking for initially was, which was those key card H I D security systems. Cause every door has to have power to it. So when staff was implement, was looking into implementing a security system. They identified these where the power is in the key instead of the lock itself. So it's much, much cheaper to deploy these things than it is.
And the ease to shut them down if they get lost or stolen. So we can just turn them off if they disappear.
Yeah, we allocate sixty thousand dollars for security measures in our twenty three twenty four budget.
Okay. And um there's just two more on page nine. Um there's two things, finance, charge, reversing next month. Late fee reversing next month. What is, I don't know what that means.
Which one are we on? I know.
Page nine.
I know what it's for.
It's Visa number two.
Visa two, there we go. So uh what happened was we took the payment down to Cashner Valley Bank and they put the wrong payment on the wrong Visa card. So one Visa had a big credit and the other Visa got the late fee and the finance charge. They have fixed it and they will be reversing those fees.
Okay.
And and not only did they reverse it, but they did it twice. So they had to reverse that. So all kinds of mistakes going on it. The bottom line, we're not paying anything. It's coming back.
Alrighty, and the last one is on page ten and it's. The Parks Platter Pots.
So Tom, that's a thousand dollars hitting the parks budget. Um just plan or?
They're just additional pots for plants throughout soon.
Like the hanging ones. Okay, I thought maybe it was something else, because at one time in the pool parking lot, there were big pots. In that middle and they had flowers in it. So I thought maybe.
And that, these are, they are buying the ones that they replace. They're slightly different than the hanging basket ones that we buy all at once from. Simpson Pan.
Preach.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I I would entertain a motion to move.
So moved.
Peak moon. Shane seconded. All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously. Comments from the public? I'm trying to stop on the agenda. There can be out in the public.
We have nobody in Zoom.
Nobody in Zoom.
Wow, quiet.
Oh, man.
Business day.
This is a slow business day.
You know it. You know it.
We're going for a rush.
I know, keep it moving. All right. Six action items, resolution 122024, our six-year transportation improvement plan. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, good evening, council. This action item before you receive names associated as the mayor gave resolution 12-24. That's the six-year transportation improvement plan. This is an annual housekeeping keeping item. So in this transportation improvement plan has projects for the next six years. Typically, what we try to do is the projects for the next three years, we have funding secured or likely funding secured in the subsequent three years are, they're unconstrained. So usually projects listed that we don't have secure funding for. Once this is approved, if there's any projects that are federally funded, they go on to the statewide transportation. Public hearing was held on May 28th, the last city council meeting, when we discussed this event. So I'll keep this brief and open it up for any questions.
I have some.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, on the first page, down the very bottom, the 150,000 that Link is paying us for, I just wanted to make sure. It sounds like gateway feature. I thought we were gonna put one because trucks drive over that.
So that's a, that's just a placeholder. The, the initial budget was to explore for a gateway feature, but around about, just he doesn't send the tip, doesn't mean you have to pursue it.
Okay.
It's just in there as a, as if it was once in there. That remains, that's to be discussed at future time.
Okay, so it's not in or out?
Yeah, the money's there, should you pursue it?
Okay. On the next page, page two. I circled all the streets under construction, the 10 feet wide multi-use trail. Round St. Kill. Why did this? I just put other street buses on some of them for years.
Are you talking about the residential street?
Yeah.
So this is a carryover from previous years, and Andy is currently refining our payment preservation program that is coincided with the integrated capital improvement program. So once we get that ironed out and a funding mechanism and costs associated with that, this will be updated.
Okay. And there was some huge trucks over around Osborne today. I just wondered what they were taking out.
They were dropping off in New Blackwood.
That was that? Okay. They did.
Yay for big trucks.
You're, you're not supposed to run your engine in a. They must have spent the gas money for Spokane to here, running their engine of the two trucks that were there, and then more came. And I couldn't figure what they were doing. Would they put it be in the building? Or, so is, are they out on the field or they went in the building?
I'm, I'm not sure. John took care of that.
Okay.
On Sean, so.
Sure, probably at least under the.
Okay, and I kind of think that that was the last one.
It was. You guys are lucky tonight.
I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution 122024, six-year transportation improvement plan.
By Ann, seconded by Shane.
I was waiting for Sharon.
I know.
I wasn't gonna sip on your toe. You'd already.
All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously. Purchasing a parking kiosk for downtown core will replace our lovely parking meters.
I'm gonna defer to Shannon.
Yay, Shannon.
Good morning, staff. The council is being asked to offer purchase of 43 additional parking kiosks. These kiosks will be deployed in a new place to park the box. Construction has been completed. At the both company temporary parking lot where Baltimore's finest was located and some strategic locations downtown to replace these 40 meters for on-street parking. Kiosk will be procured through the state by a big content and a need by the Washington Department of Enterprise Services. After the additional space kiosks are operational, they are located with a century box. The bill from Glover for purchase delivery, planning and installation of 43 kiosks is on cap seven.
And note that that did not include the sales tax that Chantel pointed that out to me to be at the meeting.
Actually, not certain. It's possible that they have it embedded in that unit price. So if you make your motion tonight, I would ask that you just say with, possibly without tax included. Because the tax, if it does get added, it is gonna be somewhere close to $22,000 in tax.
In tax?
In tax.
Do, do we need to include the actual dollar figure?
No, no. Make note in the motion that it's.
Either of the motions.
The second motion is to surplus.
Yeah, you don't know.
Yeah.
Do we have a standard distance that we place these kiosks apart from each other?
Maybe typically cover seven to 10 stalls. So they're not going to be right next to each other. And I will err more on getting a little further apart just to keep the sidewalks would be nice.
Are these 43 just to cover our needs for replacing the meters? Or does it also include some additional ones for future use?
It does include some additional ones for future use. It would be determined a little culture to that would be implemented, but the future use is the greater loss. The temporary parking lot, so it will be a boost that one if we don't make that into a parking lot.
How many, how many spots are we getting, picking up where Leavenworth's finest was? From our design shows around 23 spots right now. That's a very preliminary design. Are we gonna strike, use flour or chalk it or? Yeah, it's gonna be, it'll, it'll be striped. Painted strip, yeah.
Just daisies.
Just lamb ass cute.
It's summer style.
I was gonna say, in the, in the bottom part, just before you sign it, the, the date, it's got, by accepting this order, customer agrees to be bound by all applicable terms and conditions or terms of existing contracts between customer and Kale Ava Glover for the same products and services, if any. I kind of wanted what the meaning of that was, and are there any hiccups that we, we checked everything out and?
We do have Calais kiosks installed now. All of our parking, and I also use their kiosks out in Commercial Street to test it. Because they're gonna just, uh, have on part of the test. They are the ones they are seeing with the five languages. So we will literally have the same kiosks going all through town.
Okay.
They'll look the same, they'll act the same. It would just be.
All they, they will be the solars instead of.
There, yeah, these are solar.
Yeah.
And they can't be pulled out?
No.
Like the, they were doing the parking lot when we first got them and they were down with the.
Yeah, that is why we've been wanting to replace them. These are the meters we have, have cost us some and number of green lights. They come out of the ground and I do think this would be better.
Okay, and have we fixed it before the, I can't remember, they were called, we're in the ground and they didn't work right? So what, have we done something aerial?
Yeah, we're currently piloting sensors from Clever City, which is a Munich-based company in Asgard Blue and Coldshot parking lots.
Okay. And what's happening in the others?
We're, we're testing those. We don't have sensor mechanisms, so we have is the portion that goes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve the purchase of 43 parking kiosks for the city's paid parking program.
Not, not voting intent, possibly.
Well, it doesn't say a dollar figure, so it doesn't matter, right? Because the, the agreement says it excludes taxes, so.
We're good.
Second. Okay, moved by Ann, seconded by Zeke. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. All right, they're passing unanimously. Part B, surplus.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve the surplus of all parking meters in inventory that are being replaced with parking kiosks.
Second.
Moved by Ann, seconded by Shane. All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously. All right, the next action items, Front Street Restroom Stairway Expansion, bid award. That you, Tom, it said.
Oh, I forgot to leave. I'm sorry.
Yeah, should not. Yeah, I should. So I'll take this one. So thank you, Mayor. Once again, good evening, council. This, this action item is associated with the Front Street Restroom Stairway Expansion Bid Project, yes, project. Little bit of history, we originally had a bid opening on this project, March 20th. We were both at one bid that was quite a bit higher than the engineer's estimate. We worked with A R C Architects and rebid the project. Had a bid opening on, and excuse me, September 4th, April 9th, the council rejected that one bid. When we remit, rebid the project and on May 29th, we received three bids. So that's a good news. We were sleeping with shell bids. The low bid was submitted by the same contractor as the first bid, that's Cascade Central Construction. I'll, I'll see that one actually. The low bid is higher than the engineer's estimate. However, you'll notice that A R C updated their engineer's estimate to reflect closer to reality. The big difference I missed around the bids, yes, the low bid is 31% over the engineer's estimate. But because we received three total bids, you can see that the two bids, two low bids were so close percentage that that indicates that the low bid is competitive. So therefore, the engineer's estimate is just lighting on this project. Both A R C Architects and staff, of course, that are recommending a war on this project. If we do delay and kick this down the road, there's a really good chance it's going to, there'll be cost escalations at this point, like we know that we have a competitive bid based on the design. With that being said, I'll pause for questions.
Should we approve this? When would the contractor start construction?
So that's, that remains to be seen after we award the contract. I believe that there is language on the contract that they do have to start within a certain amount of time. So basically, as soon as they get your contracting, so it could be as soon as 30 days.
Okay. And for the additional 31% above the estimate, where is that money coming from?
It'd be all the big lodging tax.
Lodging tax, okay.
Tom, what's, what's the expected duration of the project as far as finishing?
So we, we've been telling folks it's approximately a year. We're hopeful it's gonna take a little bit less time than that. It's gonna be about a year. Destruction, we start to finish.
And the disruption in Plan B or Porta Johns or what's the?
So we're gonna, we're gonna pursue trailers, restaurant trailers. They're a little bit, they're a little bit nice. Yeah, affordable restaurants. And the, and the construction site will be fenced off completely. So it'd be isolated. So all the construction activity will be within a fenced area. There'll be no parking of contractors outside on Front Street. So it'd be contained there.
Not categorizing these in my brain very well. Is the Cascade Central Construction Company one that did the complaint?
No, unrelated. We didn't have any good protests against this project. It was on the seal, the street seal.
From a budget standpoint, some of this project was already put into the budget. So my math at this point, even though it's a $1.9 million contract, we're only gonna add about 1.3 million to the lodging tax fund to make this one happen to be approved. Will there be another contract for construction?
Yes, thank you. That's a good point. There's gonna be construction, services for construction through the architectural firm. I do not have a scope, we don't have a spoken fee for that, but rough order magnitude is gonna be about 15% of the construction value.
And will that also be a lodging tax contract?
So what is that? I don't know what that means, Tom.
The services for construction, that's where A R C Architect is gonna manage the contract on cap. So on a project like this, they're gonna have to deal with approving submissions to ensure that the contractor is in fact building the project for the specifications. This is gonna be a complicated project because a two-third, a third of this is underground. So there's likely, they're gonna have to encounter some questions. So they're gonna be submitting what are called RFI's, request for information. So the architectural firm is gonna process those RFI's and make sure that they get adequate direction. We don't have a staff to manage a project.
Right. And that's like, so that kind of supervision by, by Arc is 15% of the.
Well, I don't have the exact amount, but that's just a rough, I'll give you a rough order.
Rough to estimate. We've actually had some come in last.
That's right. And of course, inspection services, tiered testing.
Right.
Leavenworth City Council moves to accept the construction bid and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Cascade, Cascade Central Construction LLC for the Front Street Restrooms and Stairway Expansion Project in the amount of $1,965,000.
Second.
Moved by Ann, seconded by Sharon. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously.
Thank you, council. This is going to be an exciting project. You've seen the rendering to this restroom, what's gonna, what's gonna be the goal of the plan. We'll be increasing the level of service. It'll, it'll, it'll make a big difference on a spot.
It's a new photo.
Yeah. Okay, let's all go take our picture. Council report, Sharon.
And we went out to bed again.
Yeah, pretty much so.
On the 29th, which is a Wednesday, I, I'll explain a little bit. You guys might already know this, but you know, we had no water in the pool and we also had 10 lifeguards to change, to train. So the very nice manager at the casual pool allowed us to use their pool. And so we have, they've all done their testing. They did their water testing and everything in casual pool. And I think we met maybe four times down that lot of hours. It's like a 21-hour course, I think. And then up here, then we did the, they took the written tests and all 10 were successful and far lifeguards. So we, we, that was, that was one of the things that was really a tough thing to try to work on because water and we're gonna, this one, I think, was gonna let us pay Kevin, charge us anything to.
That's cool.
Cool. And so it was 65 degrees first day. And the wind was blowing. It was not a pretty sight, but the little chimps were shivering and everything. Very soon after, we entered the water. Okay, on, excuse me. On the 30th, which was a Thursday, U F A or Upper Valley Aquatics Board met, and I'll give that to Shane.
Boosters.
Boosters. What did I say?
Board.
I, you know, I don't have.
Boosters, not the board. They're not the board.
Oh, oh, okay. I see. Okay, I'm sorry. All right. Thank you, Sharon.
You can take it.
June 1st was a Saturday and I just wanted to tell you how important that recycle center is and how well, excuse me, they're operating things this year. In particular, last year was pretty awful in the beginning of the grass and yard waste coming because everybody, their dog was coming there because they could get it free and you know, they had to pay out at the East Leavenworth bicycle road site. And they've checked everybody's, they're checking everybody's ID and it's going nicely and they're doing a good job. But I just wanted to kind of give them a woo-hoo. On June 5th, Wednesday, was our last morning backpacking until school starts in the fall. And I went to the planning commission meeting, excuse me, also on June 5th. And that was an interesting condo discussion, and I'm still struggling with a lot of it as well up nose. On June 10th, Monday, which was yesterday and today, both days. The fourth grade starts their, their year in Washington State History, their first year studying. And so at the end of the year, and I think we just started this last year, the museum board did that, excuse me, Judy Durpack and Barry. And then are the the, the people that are kind of in charge of running that program. And so it starts at nine in the morning and there's three different groups that come in separately of each other. And so I'm always asked to be the royal lady person. So I could, on my royal lady clothes and shoes and shuffle off down to the, down there. And, excuse me. This year, we had Bernadette Phillips, who is also a member of the museum board, doesn't live here, lives quite a distance away, and Julie Edwards, and they are all, I probably won't say this right. This, where did I write it? The Scotia Indians. And they're, they're, the way they deal with. And um, they're, they're, the way they deal with the kids and uh, kids all sit down and they talk and, and um. One of the gals had a basket and she was, you know, was showing how the, the weaving of the basket and the stories of the Indians and. All that. Transpired throughout the years, that, you know, I don't know how many years, a lot of years. And that the Scotia Indians lived in Leavenworth, it wasn't Leavenworth, they lived here. And yeah, and got displaced as the Indians did all over, so fascinating stories that they had. And um, they lived to the, you know, lived them, their, their families lived them. So there was, I wish everybody could heard what they had to say, so it was so good and so interesting. And so um, they also. Um. Work with the Wenatchee River Institute with some and help with some of their programs. But it was, it was fascinating, I left both days listening to the, to those guys talk. So um, I, and uh, the fourth graders came in three different groups. So each one of us that had something to say said it three times each day, and so um. Let's see, I'm actually their last stop before they head back to school, and I guess you, you create as you go, and I thought to me today. I don't, I play the chicken dance. I knew, I know how to do that on my phone, much to the amazement of anybody who knows me. So I quickly got it on there, and so when they left, you know, I played the chicken dance, they were headed out the door and they were. Do the chicken dance routine, so anyway, that's my story, I'm sticking to it.
I don't have a report, all my county meetings are in the second half of the month.
Um, I tend to be a planning commission meeting on the fifth, whatever, or just last week. Um. Yeah, I guess it was fifth of June, and so. Real thorough discussion, um, I still remain concerned somewhat about re- um displacement. But um, I don't think that's a. Negated, I think that's a. Blocking thing, I just think. We need to look at that carefully, but. What I've heard so far, I've been re impressed with strategy of condos, what it could do, um, so, but. And that's the end of my report.
Great.
Uh, on May thirtieth, I met with Andrea uh to tour the public works facilities, uh. We went down to the parking building, um, the maintenance shop, uh, the mechanic shop and the water treatment plant, and it was. Really cool to see, see all that, the waste wastewater treatment plant, see all that up close and. How hard everyone is working out there and. Really wanna give kudos to every one of the. Public Works Department, um, that night, uh, I had a meeting with, uh, or attended a meeting with the Upper Valley. Aquatic boosters and we talked about the summer splash bash and the. Tentative date for that, um, I think we're shooting for June twenty-first, if everything goes well and the pool is ready by then. Um, staff all trained up, um, we assigned the. Uh, committee heads for, you know, food, entertainment, music and. Everything like that. That's the end of my report.
Great. Thomas?
Um, I was uh with Shane and Andrea as well, um. Going to the public works and the parking, um, it was really cool, um, Shane shows some really cool, cool stuff that's. The, the sensors that she's testing and. I think it's gonna make their life a lot easier, just parking is on, is on its path for sure. Um, and then, like you said, in the wastewater treatment center, it was like going into like. A lab, you know, it's so cool, and then, but you can see the new sections and the, it's just the whole process is really, it's really cool. And uh, my Bob Barker P S A is, don't put your dental floss in the toilet. That's the end of my report.
All right, thank you, um, just real briefly, next week, um. Three of us will be headed to Association of Washington Cities, uh, annual conference, Travis has been enjoying, um. Estelle, me and I will be heading down there and I'll like start a day early because of being on the board, but always look forward to it, it's always. Great to network with. All those cities that are dealing with so many of the same issues, um. And then uh, do have on the schedule, um, that Blake and I will be meeting with our representative Mike Steele. Um, and I know the housing committee has got a letter in process to also send along, you know. So we're gonna try to do some pre-work on uh, the next legislative session and keep moving forward with trying to uh. Get uh some funding and hopefully get some support from our, our local folks uh in the legislature, so. Um, that's my report.
Great. Uh, I've got a slightly longer report, I apologize in advance. Uh, but the mayor and I met with uh Representative Kim Schreier and her staff on Friday. Uh, we spent an hour with them and we walked the Osborne property from here and discussed the all-inclusive playground. And reviewed the library community space project, uh, her staff is working with HUD to get the technical correction, to get the technical correction. Um. Approved so that we can apply the nine hundred and forty thousand dollar community project fund grant, uh, funds shifted to this project. I met with Bridget Paris from the Department of Commerce to discuss asbestos abatement at the Osborne. Um, and there are funds available for this work, and I'm working diligently to get an updated price for the work so I can apply for these funds, which are awarded on a first come, first served basis. So if we are successful, uh, we could have remediation of that abatement, of that asbestos uh taking place, this late summer, early fall. Uh, today I met with Brian Prey, um, he's a planning commission um member, he's also a wheelchair user. And I asked him to meet with me so I could better understand the struggles that handicap people have in navigating our sidewalks and streets downtown. Uh, it was an eye-opening experience and I realized that there's much that needs to be done to make our downtown as welcoming as possible. Uh, interestingly enough, he does not seem to think that we have an ADA parking issue, we just have a parking issue. But many of our ramp sidewalks and streets do lack ADA compliance, and I'll be meeting with public works to review the most problematic areas that Brian pointed out today. Uh, pool manager Kelly Lemmons is chomping at the bit to get the pool opened, uh, which is looking like early next week. Um, we were discussing today, we might do a soft opening on Fri- on Monday, uh, the swim team. Under their contract, start is supposed to start Monday, she's not sure she has the staff to. Go into full operations because she still has some water time with her staff, which can. Have them on the stand, um, but we are hoping to have um. Have the pool open next week, soft opening Monday, and then hopefully full operation by Tuesday, but that is not a promise, that is um. We're still working on that. Uh, the eleven more fund applications closed yesterday, and we received eighteen applications, um, that totaled sixty-four thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars. For the general fund grants, and we have sixty-two thousand available. Um, and then lodging tax, where we had a hundred and seventy-eight thousand available, we received twenty-one applications um for a hundred and fifty-three thousand and. Hundred fifty-three thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, so Sue will be reaching out to the members of the Urban Development Committee to schedule a time in July to review and score the applications. Uh, the mayor and I toured the golf course with two board members and two staff members, and we're still working through the lease at this time. Um, and I would like to remind the council that I'm willing and available to meet with you guys individually at your convenience, you know, I've been at your disposal since I started, just wanna. Reiterate that, and um, one request, I would ask council, if you happen to be in possession of any of our staff members' personal information. Specifically their personal cell phones, please do not share it with their constituents, please do not share it. If people have an emergency, we have river bomb for emergencies, we can always reach out to me, but please do not disclose staff's personal, um, thoughts, thank you.
All right, Chen tell.
And reports are fully done, so we completed our last one last week, Watch Dot, and your non-discrimination report, we got that one submitted. Um, thank you very much to Andy in particular and Tom, but Andy did a lot of work to help finalize that one. Uh, the city's annual report, as I reported last time, it was completed, you will see a copy of that in your next packet and. I produced the annual packet that is in paper form that you'll all get a copy of as well. Um, if you have any question about it, by all means ask me, it's. A lot of numbers that don't make sense to a person that has no idea what it means, so. Don't feel bad. Read the notes section, you'll get the gist of it. Um. With that, the auditors have contacted me, uh, they are ready to kick off. So I'm shooting for probably the week of the twenty-fourth of June to get their initial requests. So that they can start working remotely, uh, in person, they wanna start no later than July fifteenth. And at the same time, it's now budget kickoff season, so over the next two weeks, I'll be looking at and putting together all the instructions for internal. Requests from all the staff department so that they can start working on getting that information together and providing to me so that I then start my process. Oh, and I'll add to your comment, Helen and I did talk about the graciousness of the casual soul. And I told her to um bring that to P R S A. So that we can talk about some sort of thank you, the, we'll do for that, that was, that was really cool.
Yeah, we're looking for a home there for a second and they're gonna charge us over here and that, that's really nice.
Yeah, they didn't. So.
That's nice.
We definitely, I, we have ideas.
Yeah, good.
And remind us of summer splash.
Council members, I want to let you know that we are bringing on permit tag. Katie Popper is joining us from Shalton, Tommy will start this Thursday. Comes with the over your experience in the position, so we're anxious to get him up and running quickly. It will be expanding as we initially had proposed the position to take over permits for public works. And some of the event permits as well as that unfolds for this training. Uh, the hazard mitigation plan has been tackled by maybe, she's done the first annex and the second, second annex, they divide. Updating that document into annexes, how they determine. Any case, we're getting near a final draft, so if any of the council members want to review that, it's a very. Extensive and detailed document, that maybe it'd be happy to have a volunteer. You know. Otherwise, our new building official is doing a great job, getting his feet familiar with our community. He's absolutely established about how much work we have going, uh, so. We'll keep them very busy, so, thank you.
And he likes to be busy.
So, thank you, Mayor, just a couple updates, first of all, let me update any questions on the public works board in the chat now. Quick shout out to Rick Evans and his team, replacing a sewer blockage last week at Seahill Drive and Whitney Street. Cause of blockage, excessive grease and whites. Just a public service announcement, there's no such thing as flush, flushable ones.
Yeah.
It's almost no more.
This is an area of, of, you know, town, there's not a lot of commercial, so the grease, again, even in residential situations. Please don't pour three some drain or in your toilet. Last update, just an update on the big belly cans, there's been a few big belly cans that have not been reporting out one full. We may have seen some social media on this, but I just want to assure the council that the, the crew is working diligently, diligently on trying to get these. Uh, big belly cans to, to report out when they're full, there's just a couple that are problematic, and so they're getting on top of it. This is a, again, a new process, we're working through some cases. All in all, the couple of cans that haven't been reporting out and then just the cleanliness of them, so we're having to step up just cleaning them. I think you mentioned before, which is the shoots, we open up the bin, are uh becoming. More, they're becoming more dirty quicker. Just made, but nonetheless, we're uh, the crew's getting on top of it.
Do you need banned sales of ice cream?
And governor.
Yeah, ice cream is bad going, yeah.
It was nice to see the one that was uh, had the fire inside of it, just really contained the fire really well.
There's, I guess, news.
It went viral, right outside of Icicle Brewing, coupled employed their video again.
Oh, was smoking, yeah.
Yeah, it self extinguished, so. R two D two unit, just self was like.
It was actually the ice cream that.
Yeah, there you go.
I got a couple of questions for Tom. Um, this here, you met with the Nazarene Church representative, is there anything we should know?
Uh, and so this what predates what came to council, this was a May update, so I met with them before, before council, so they reached out, we need to have another. Meeting.
Okay. Um. You and, you were, um, attended internal private development check-in meeting, what's that?
That's just a routine meeting that we hold occasionally internally, just to make sure we're on the same page with all developments going on between public works and community development. Or else, once it, ten.
Okay, you met with trout unlimited volunteers regarding fish pond operations, what's going on there?
Yeah, so. In, in a perfect world, we would be hands off with maintaining this recirculation pumps with the fish pond. They are cumbersome, there's no alarm, so when the fish, when those recirculation pumps go down or boost prime. The, the trout and pond that are at risk to not surviving, and so that's, unfortunately, we just. We don't have a good mechanism to maintain those pumps, and quite frankly, they're still owned by the P U D, so we are maintaining those pumps just. Out of the goodness of our heart at this point, so. We're trying, maybe try to limit and get them the resources to be autonomous and maintain the pumps, so, so we're trying to, yeah. Forge that for.
Okay, that's a continuing problem for over year, the years. Um. Sold one cemetery plot, is that was that one by the storage?
Check with Amber, I believe that may have been the last loss, or we have one left.
That isn't by the storage unit?
It is by.
Oh, it is, okay. Let's see if there's anything more here, um. You rented an electric vehicle for use during the construction season?
Yes, that's correct, so we, we have a shortage of admin vehicles, especially during the summertime, so when Andy is gonna be running out, checking up front. So instead of purchasing a new vehicle, we were able to rent the.
Oh.
Vehicle off the state contract.
Okay.
Twenty volts with max. With California plates, it's, it's a city, it's a residential.
Um, the boulevards that you've ordered for French Street, are they here?
They are, they, they arrived, so we, we just received them, so next step is. Install.
Okay, and um, assisted parking department with lift operations.
Well, I can, I helped Shannon troubleshoot some with parking sensors with the lift.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
And. Um. One, uh, your very last one under the water division, it looks like maybe there was. Five million dollars, four million dollars different, or not dollars, gallons difference, is there a, a, a reason that you guys? Have figured out for that, or?
So, and just an analogy, I believe that April was, April this year could have been a little bit longer than last year.
Okay.
So my guess that's a year.
Okay. I think that's it, why do I have another tab here? Hey, we want.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
Well, you're.
I move to germ.
All those in favor? All right, bye.
Bye.
There you go, Shannon.